Here. Mayor Bauer.
Here.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Mayor Potomac.
From Matheran.
Here.
And Alderman Jones.
Here.
Mayor Wada Cor.
All right, thank you. The task would you lead us?
Yes ma'am.
Is the pledge so?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we have no special presentations today. So next up on the agenda is public comments. And Ms. Ginger Jones has requested to speak on subject number three.
Oh. Okay.
I just wanted to mention that I consider the rate increase. Oh, I'm sorry, Ginger Jones, one six six one two, correct. Uh, the rate increase is very reasonable, I appreciate that. But most of those trash cans don't have handles. And so I would like to see that taken out of it because I don't have any of those big trash cans that have handles on the side. Other than that, that's all I want to say. Otherwise, I think it's very good. We don't have kinds when people put it out in the morning or the afternoon, you know. There's some out there now, and garbage already picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we don't have any special announcements today. And typically, the second meeting of the month, we don't have reports from our directors. That occurs on the first meeting of the month. So next is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to discuss the minutes? Any reason to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Can we discuss?
One second.
Okay, does anybody have any comments, questions about the minutes? No? Okay.
Is there any reason we wouldn't? Does anybody have a reason why we wouldn't approve?
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I might watch and see if we're agreed on.
Oh, did somebody have? Oh. Okay, Alderman, Potomac.
I didn't hear any reason for not.
Right, motion to both.
Therefore, make the motion that we approve the minutes unless the last council.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor of the minutes? Okay.
Upstand.
Did you get that, Tina?
Got it.
All right. Next, your comments and reports from member of council. We're gonna go right to left this time?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Nothing.
All right.
Nothing reported.
All right.
I don't have anything.
All right.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I attended the West Gelson Island Property Property Association meeting and, um, with Yipola. And took video for that, it's on YouTube. And Cheryl Johnson was there. She spoke about the Texas Legislature that passed the property tax relief package um, that the governor signed. So if you look, and it's only about a twenty minute video, but she had a lot of information that talks about that eighteen billion dollar um leg- legislation that was passed. So, um, with the hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption, twenty percent circuit breaker, essentially an appraisal cap, and so on. So you might want to take a minute and go watch that video. It'll be real informative for you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next we're on to new business. Uh, first item is discussion and consideration to possibly take action approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, which is establishing guidelines for volunteer engagement in the city of Jamaica Beach. Um, do we have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay. Um, so basically, the resolution you have in the packet um specifies terms by which the city utilizes all the wonderful resources and intelligence we have in this community to come help city hobby goals and objectives. Um, there's a liability waiver that goes with it so that, um, you know, both the city and the volunteer are protected. Um, it specifies that there will be a city council liaison and an assigned city staff person with each of the identified opportunities where a volunteer could help us out. Um, the purpose of that is to make sure that the volunteer clearly understands their guidelines and restrictions. And more importantly, it's to make sure that city staff has an avenue to maximize that person's input. So, um, you know, sometimes help isn't always help. And, um, and putting some guidelines in place that help to find that. So that's the purpose of this. All right, so, um, discussion?
Oh, I have, I have a few.
Good.
Comments slash questions. One is what sort of guardrails do we have in place? Because when you're talking about, that you're talking about volunteer access to systems that might contain personally identifiable information. So therefore, there has to be some sort of guardrail around that. Whether it's non-disclosure or some, there, yeah, there's got to be and I'm not talking about a one sheet, there's got to be some serious legalese around this. I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm not trying to be anything. I'm just trying to make sure that we protect the city and we protect the volunteers. Uh, it's a, it's a two-way street, right? We don't want a volunteer getting sued because we didn't provide the proper guidelines or guardrails and they access something they shouldn't have. Holy moly, we're in a, we're in a situation we don't want to be. So that's my, my primary concern is, is guardrails and, and scope and those sort of things. Well, this is nice and I, and I appreciate all that are trying to help us. We've got to have a lot more meat than this for me to feel anything close to being helped.
Um, okay.
And how does the staff feel about having help that they may or may not need? You know, and that's kind of, you know, we would have to give them to see if they if they have to use more of their time instructing these people what to do, what not to do, than it would be to do it yourself. So, you know, those are questions I get.
That's part of the reason for the city council liaison, right? Assigned to every sort of volunteer activity. So that the city council liaison over that task would help provide the, the necessary structure and format around that task. And then also, city staff would have a person to go to and, and say, you know, hey, this, this really isn't giving the help I wanted. Uh, so that was, that was the reason that a city council liaison will always be assigned to, to any given task. So that staff does have another avenue to, to navigate what can be a touchy situation. Any other comments, discussion?
Yes, I have a few comments. It's funny you should bring that up, Woody, because when I saw this on the agenda, I contacted staff. And pretty much unanimously, they said they were uncomfortable about this. It made them feel uneasy because they were worried about the volunteers' actions could come back and threaten the staff's position or what they've done. I think this is it's a good thought, you know, to have people to help, but it's putting our city in liability. I've already told you about this, that I'm comfortable with it, I've already asked you to stop. You're currently doing it now and you're doing it, you're giving citizens access to things they shouldn't. Um, this is gonna get the city in trouble. We, we should not have citizens in here now, I think it should be stopped immediately. And I think this should be read over by our legal and this should be tabled.
Okay, legal did review it. Anyway, and it, uh, it is, it is interesting then when I go back and, and look at goals from previous administrations. One of the big goals was for everyone now to improve city volunteerism, to help accomplish some of our goals, so badly needed. Uh, so apparently, there's been a shift in philosophy on volunteers contributing to the city.
Now, I believe that volunteerism would be to park board events or events around town, not having access to our public records, to our personal information, to our SDRs, to our water bill. There's a big difference there.
Well, everything with SDRs is public record.
The credit card information, their driver's license, their PII.
But what is a PII?
Personally identifiable information.
Well, when I did, when, when I did an open record request asking for owners and addresses of, um, SDRs, that was a public information.
Their, their name and address is public information, but things like their credit card numbers or
No one's looking for that, and that's where the staff was saying that's not available.
But I'm just saying it's
I think that's part of the guardrail thing.
Yeah, it's part of the guardrail thing is, you know, what's
Put some in place so that it doesn't matter. It's that simple.
It's that simple. Why do we have currently citizens having access to our public systems, being on, in meetings with our subcontractors, being on phone calls with our accounts? Where's the guardrails there, Mayor? Why, why is this being done? And there, there's no oversight, there's no guardrails. It's putting us in jeopardy.
Okay, I understand that. Um, but there's a liability clause that goes along, um, with this to sign. And, uh, that would, you know, help limit that exposure. Um, but that's also the point of assigning a city council person to help provide, uh, checks and balances and approvals, uh, on help. So for instance, on the website, uh, you know, we've had, Pam Joffe's done an amazing job getting information on our website and getting it updated and, and streamlined. Uh, and improved functionality on the website. And there's no personal information on the website. Everything out there is public and accessible to the public. But, uh, with a system like this installed, then there would be a city council liaison. And whenever a website modification was required or requested, you know, it would go through the checks of both the staff person and the city council person, uh, before it would actually be implemented. To, to try to help us get over some of our current staffing gaps. Um, and if we want to put, I mean, my, part of my challenge is as far as putting guardrails in other than the city council liaison being, you know, responsible from approaching it from that perspective, how do you define something that, um, that clears, that spells out what it should be for every instance? I, I mean, we could try to put guardrails in place, but there's gonna be
I can tell you that without guardrails in place, we're gonna get ourselves cotton-rained. And it'd be something most likely completely unintentional. And somebody with good intentions and then we're, we're stuck with
Okay.
Twenty thousand illegal bills and instead one more. Uh, I want us to stay out of those types of situations, that's my fiduciary duty to the citizens.
Um.
You say that it's to help the staff, but the staff has pointed out concerns and you also said
You say the sta- our staff has concerns about this?
Yes, sir.
And they discussed this with you?
Yes, sir. I came in to talk with them after I saw this. Also, you're saying we're short-staffed, we have more staffing now than the city's ever had in its history.
Yeah, and we have a hundred fifty more SDRs to manage. Um, the building has been crazy and the permits with that going crazy. And, um, and, and just all the additional legal requirements that take place constantly. So yes, we are staffed more fully than we have been. But it's also relatively all new staff. You know, the most senior person has been here a year. So, you know, the learning curve is huge. And, yeah, right now, we, we've got a lot of hurdles to overcome. And volunteerism could, could help us crawl that, that hill a little faster. But, um
Yeah, and please keep in mind too, things like we're, we're behind in the audit. We were behind in getting some of the financial information, I believe, logged. I haven't been personally involved in this. Um, so it's been several things that due to the election cycle, different situations, and we fall behind. And also, and also, city council, when we sat in here six months ago, one of our big concerns is we're understaffed. And we're gonna go out and hire people to alleviate that problem. Now, now we've done the wrong thing by staffing up to take care of the workload? I disagree.
What do you disagree with? I didn't say it was a bad thing, I said we have more staff than ever.
Because we need them. That's why we fell behind starkly.
Okay, so is the, is the recommendation to, um, to table it with guardrails?
I would, I would like to see table and I would like to see, I would like to see somebody believes in this. And I, you know, I know that it's unpopular to be that guy, but I'm that guy.
No, I, I understand that.
And so if we could get, and I mean, I mean, in, in principle, I, I, I love this, right? But in practice,
Okay.
it needs a lot more.
Okay.
Not only that, I'll be that guy. All current volunteerism needs to cease immediately until we're sure the city is protected. We don't need citizens going through our police files. We don't need citizens with access to our sites. Okay, needs to stop before we get in trouble. I'm not doing it to be an ass, I'm doing it to protect the city.
Okay, point taken. Um, all right, so do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table. Second.
Second that motion.
All right, all in.
The table based on adding table. My comment is table based on adding
Legal guardrails.
And, and taking care of the council members concerned.
Okay.
Can I ask one?
Um, no. This is a regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting.
Not a workshop. We will have discussion on the two agenda items that are, that are open for discussion. So, uh, okay, did we vote? Yeah, we had a second, no. Vote to table with, um, a- adding more legal protections and guardrails in place?
And ceasing all activities immediately?
And ceasing all activities immediately.
It's your motion, you good with that, David? Captain, I second that.
Okay, all in favor? Who said you in this, Woody's first?
Yes.
Okay. All right, on to new business item number two. Um, discussion and consideration to take, to possibly take action approving the city of Jamaica Beach solid waste and recycling agreement with Amerowaste. Um, do I have a motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay, so as you all know, um, our agreement ran out several months ago. Um, Amerowaste has been working with us on a month-to-month basel- basis. So, uh, Robert went out to bid, um, several months ago and lots of interest, uh, Amerowaste was the single respondent to our bid. And we've worked with them on a contract and it's attached. So, looking at that, the rates will be raising from a current twelve nineteen uh, trash rate on your bill. The new proposal is fourteen fifteen. Um, rates have not gone up for a while. And I, I, I feel everybody would agree that we, we have pretty stellar, fantastic trash pickup here. Um, we did carve out a separate bill for the services that pertain to the city. And, um, for instance, picking up our dumpsters and picking up trash on the beach. Um, those were pulled out separate, um, because actually, those are activities that can be paid for out of different budgets and funds. And shouldn't fall to the burden of the homeowner to pick up all of the city trash. So you're being charged just for the portion that pertains to Amerowaste picking up your trash. Um, the contract is pretty much the same. Um, one of the differences is it does specify four recept- four containers, four receptacles per pickup. Uh, it does, it does still allow the same language for brush pickup and materials that are cut and bled. So, uh, green waste is kind of a, a different criteria. Um, so that part stays pretty much the same. Um, any comments from council? So four containers Monday and four containers on Thursday. So same there. Yes. Okay. And the size? Um.
Maximum of sixty-four gallons and maximum weight fifty.
Yeah, and that was the same, um, terms in the previous contract too. So that hasn't changed. Our ordinance, which we're getting ready to discuss in a minute, the, the trash ordinance does not match our contract. Uh, and, and hasn't previously either. So we have a different discussion around modifying our trash ordinance, which we will, we will need to do. But are there any other comments, questions?
It's all very reasonable.
Okay, do I have a motion to vote? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the contract as, as applied? Okay, you know, so, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is to, um, discuss on potential modification of ordinance twenty nineteen-one, which is our trash ordinance. So it's the, um, providing for solid waste disposal. And the current contract says a thirty gallon container is the max. So if you think back, I, I think all of us are old enough to remember the small trash cans that were common. Uh, that's about a thirty gallon trash can, the kind most of us grew up with. Um, a sixty-four gallon container, which is what is in our contract, is the ones you see, um, they're the bigger ones at Home Depot, but not the biggest ones. The biggest ones, can you help me, the biggest ones are what, eighty?
Nineties.
Eighty-six gallons, nineties, yeah. Um, so the new contract does say sixty-four gallons. So looking at, at how consideration for modifying the ordinance, and we are gonna open this up for uh, community input again and discussion. Um, we need to match the ordinance with a sixty-four gallon size. The, uh, Ginger, it does say that we need to have type-fitting lids and handles. And, uh, you know, our ordinance needs to it, it makes it a lot easier on our trash guys. I'm sure we can give a grace period for, uh, people to comply, um, with handles because the smaller sized ones a lot of times don't have handles.
Or they break off.
Or they break off.
Which is the most common thing that happens.
Yeah, they fall over and, yeah, they're not designed for that sturdiness. Um, so, I mean, that's something to the handles really do make it easier for the guys to lift it up if they want to and
With the smaller.
Yeah, well, the sixty-four gallon ones too. Um, and then the other thing is it needs to match the, the contract that does limit it to four. Currently, our ordinance doesn't have any, um, limitation on quantity. The practice has always been, um, kind of five. Yeah, they put out a bunch, they'll eventually tell you. Most of the times, they're really good, they just look the other way and keep picking it all up, I think we all know that. Um, but having the ability to limit it, I, I think is important. And to keep our, to keep our rates and costs down across the board on a one-off basis, the, the trash guys have been wonderful. And then the other thing I would like to propose, and we can talk about this, is I think we all know what our neighborhood looks like on Monday morning. When the white trash bags, um, from everybody have been left out. They're either overstuffed in a container with the lid off or they're on the ground next to the container. And, um, our smart birds and smarter raccoons, uh, know what that means. Uh, they know white means kitchen refuse. And, um, so I would like to propose we have a no-white visible. That the white trash bags need to be in a closed-lidded container. So, um, at this point, I'll open this up to council. Does, what, what comments, input on a, on a trash ordinance, what would you guys like to see in that ordinance?
Just a quick question before we get on to the no-white trash bags. What about recycling, what, are there any limits? Because I put out those blue bags and if I'm Amazon and like crazy, I'll have four or five blue bags. They're not heavy, they're cardboard, but, you know, I want them, I'll have four or five blue bags with cardboard out there.
There is no limitation on recycling. So from a recycling perspective, you can put out whatever you want to. Um, yeah, please.
The only restrictions on recycling is it can't be in dark bags because the guys have to be able to see that it's truly recycling, that it's not trash, that in a recycle bin are blue bags, clear bags, and cardboard broken down because recycling can't pick up peanuts or styrofoam. So like if you go buy a new TV and you think, oh, I'm gonna shove everything back in the box, that's not recycling, that ends up being trash.
Wow, they pick up my styrofoam all the time.
It ends up probably going in the trash.
Probably they know it.
They do, they do. So, um, so, yeah, the guideline is anything in the recycle bin has to be visible. So the light blue bags and clear bags work. Um, and also, I know once upon a time we picked up glass, long time ago, but we don't
No, we still pick up ones.
Okay, it's not listed in, as a recyclable material in any of the information?
Hmm, it is.
Oh, okay.
If not, we'll make sure it's there, but no, we pick up ones.
Okay, I
We pick up all of what these spear bottles.
So there is no, there is no limitation on, on quantity of recycle. Uh, as long as they can see it and see that it truly does meet their recycling guidelines. Um, and here again, this isn't this is a basis for staff and for staff to go actually develop the trash ordinance, um, based on this input. And, uh, okay, one other comment, as you have, you said outside of the no-wise. I mean, that's probably the most controversial place.
It is the most controversial and, and, you know, I'm generally in favor of it. I just know that SDRs, they, they have no clue what the rules are. They just know that if they don't get their trash out of the house, they get, they pay an extra cleaning fee. So there, there has to be some sort of communication with the STR owners that it's not gonna be acceptable to put white trash bags out anymore.
Yep, yep, you're right.
And we could use the, for instance, we could use the website, put that on there and let everyone know on Facebook and put it on the, the water bill people, so we could just do the best we can to
Yeah, we gotta do, that's not, yeah, just, and, you know, I'm not saying that we're gonna get them all, but at least we can help.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
It's standing here on green waste. So many bags.
They never really, I, do you have a limit? Do you have a limit on, you know, how, like if, if somebody puts out eight lawn bags full of grass clippings and, and dead plants on January fifteenth after our freeze?
I thought I saw four, and I was kind of finding it.
It, there's four bundles picked up for a trash pickup?
Bundles, bundles, but then green waste is leaves?
Yes.
And stuff you, flower garden stuff? And, and they say four bags in here, right?
I didn't
If it's branches, it, there's a limitation on size and they being bundled, but not on
Eighteen inches in diameter.
Yeah, but not bags of green waste.
Yeah, there's no limit on bags of green waste. There's no limit on bags of green waste.
Okay. So we should have those in bright bags too, I think. Start educating people to use black bags.
Yes. Yeah, it will, it will be an education process. So anyway, any, any comments from citizens on, on issues with trash, things they'd like to see?
The sixty-four gallon, is that the same size that the city of Galveston uses?
No, those don't have.
That's ninety-six.
Oh, those might, okay.
And those are picked up by a machine?
Yeah, that's a different trick.
Right?
Yeah, those ninety-sixes you can't really get out of the enclo- you have to realize the guys are having to pick them up out of the enclosure, and the enclosures, most of them are already off the ground. And, yeah. And then a lot of them have to go across the ditch.
Tina, that was Ralph McDermott.
Thank you.
So when I call on you to speak, if you'd please say your name and loudly as you can hear. I believe the lady in that row.
Okay, Diane Grubie, we're on four four one nine Pollock Road. I have a concern about the comment with the tight fitting lid on the trash cans because I know the trash cans themselves don't always get back into my container. The lids themselves are going to disappear and be outside in the lawns or in the ditches or in the canals. I don't know how you would enforce that, but I have a concern about it being a requirement. I don't want birds in my trash either. But, I mean, does anyone else have a concern that they're not going to get put back into your bin?
There's ways to secure them through the trash can itself.
And tether ours.
I share your same concerns. If you drop down Jolly Roger right now, I bet you can count four of them in the ditch.
Yeah.
Maybe we could get a citizen volunteer to go and police the trash.
We can't because we have three tables of motion.
Can I pull you Russell?
That would be your personal.
You can tell your neighbors. We put all of ours up for our neighbors.
Okay, Kelly?
Kelly Billy, I'm forty-two twenty-five Jolly Roger. And I'm, I'm with you there on our trash service, I think they're excellent. And we both work from home, we see them come through all the time. And often struggle with even the smaller cans to get them out of those enclosures. And for me, with our household of safety background, I would, I would love to see a requirement put in there that when the trash cans are full on trash day, they need to be out of the bin. So that the guys are picking them up full from the floor, and then they can return them to the bin. If you've got a bin out front, for those that are not here full-time. But I don't think ergonomically, from a safety standpoint, that's a good place for them to be picking sixty-four gallons of trash and having to lift it higher than their waist. Is, I, I don't think that's a good idea for them.
Then. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I'm not quite sure. We'll have to, have to seek a little more, I, I think maybe that's a.
AmeriWaste question.
Well, it also might be something that we can encourage people to do that. But, but out of consideration and kindness to our fellow trash guys. But I'm not sure it's something that would be fairly enforceable. When I, I, I hate, I hate putting something in an ordinance that's going to be a challenge to enforce. And I think there's a, it could, anyway. We'll have to, we'll have to, I like the idea.
I mean, maybe if we just said that if you want your trash picked up, they're not picking it up out of the bin. If you want it picked up, they need to be out on the street.
Our deed restrictions on all of our properties, which is the one that we've got to deal with. Say that we have to have a bin and that the containers have to be in the bin. I'm just telling you, our deed restrictions say you should.
They, I, I.
In every section?
Mine doesn't.
I don't have, I don't think so.
Never have.
Section one is a big section, so it says in the address, we shall have a trash container.
But isn't that to contain the trash cans that are floating around, right? But when they're full, I mean, what did you say, the, the other ones were thirty gallons and fifty pounds?
Fifty pounds, that's a.
So now we're talking sixty-four gallons and more than a hundred pounds.
No, no. There's still a fifty pound limit.
Can you believe it, it's more than fifty, Watson?
You know, I always try to put less than that in here. I, I know, I use two or three sometimes.
That's a good, that's a good comment. Okay, yes ma'am, on the back row?
Anna Howard for forty-four twenty-three Pollock Road. As far as your STRs go with trash pickup, I would specify when it is rented of what is expected of them when they're going to put the garbage out. And if not, not that the owner of the property would be fine, but it would be billed back to their credit card when their trash spills all over the place. Maybe that way they would be more mindful of what they actually do with garbage. Second thing is, if you're talking about a specific size of trash can, most of us don't understand what a thirty, a sixty-four with a tight lid or not a tight lid, maybe it would be an option for y'all to buy a lot of cans that would be acceptable for the city. And even though you've said no voluntary, maybe have a neighbor spray paint your address on the outside. And that would be something that we could buy from you through the water bill. Or come out and, like we bought our flags, and buy a trash can. Make it easy for some of the people that are not easily accessible to go to the store or go to Lowe's or go to Home Depot because it is a trek. We have little cars, we can't put it in the car. And that would be four cans, maybe forty pounds or less, would be better than fifty pounds of trash can. It's just an idea.
That's, that's a good idea on a, on a.
Because I know other cities so bad.
Maybe the city could help facilitate.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ginger, I believe?
Yeah, Ginger Jones, one six six one two Curly. In our cul-de-sac, I have an agreement with all the different people to, when the garbage men come, we pull their trash cans back and put them in. The only problem we're having though is when the cleaning people come and put them out, like they put some out today after the trash came. And I'm sorry, I'm going to pull them back in because I don't want to see that trash sitting out there until Monday. But, you know, if people help each other, we've been doing that for years because we had the white bags with trash everywhere, and I hated picking up all that trash. But we just, we made that agreement and, so knock on wood, we haven't had any problems.
Okay, then.
Dre Jackson, one six six one two Curly. What Ginger's talking about to add to that. The cleaning people put trash in white bags and they load up the containers. You know, it can be a thirty gallon, but it's going to have.
A mountain.
A mountain on top and no lid. If you have a lid that's detached from your container, you take a rope, tie it around the handle, attach it to the container, and it will not become separated. But I'm, I talk to the people in my area, the owners, and we have done away with the trash bins. Because they're, I took one down for a neighbor and two rats came out of it. So, you know, that's a haven for rodents.
Yes. Okay, guys, this has been a fabulous discussion. I think we have some good ideas to put forward in an ordinance. And, and we'll be presenting that ordinance to council in the near future so that it can match. Next thing on the agenda, once again for discussion, is about modifying our short-term rental ordinance. So we have been doing a lot of work around our short-term rentals. So to, to update everybody, I mentioned it at the last meeting. We had hired a company called Host, parent company called Granicus to help us oversee our short-term rentals and provide a website where people could register, pay their taxes. And then Granicus has a crawling tool that actually goes out and searches all of the sites, all of the hosting sites. So your Airbnb, your VRBO, Travelocity, you know, they kind of go on and on. There's a large number that they crawl. And by doing that, then they also do, they use Google Earth and, and Google Street View, and they compare it to the pictures on the hosting site. And they're actually able to produce an address with a very high level of confidence that matches the advertising on the hosting sites. So out of preliminary work that, that staff and volunteers have done, it shows that we have fifty-seven unregistered sites at the moment. And I believe the number is two fifty-seven registered STRs. We are not very compliant currently with paying our taxes. We've kind of struggled with how, how to drive that. The city had canceled Host in Granicus. They thought, we thought it had been canceled, but it had not. And so we are still under contract with them for the next year. After review, Tina's been fabulous. She is getting to be very good friends with the staff at Host in Granicus. And working on how we close our gap faster, working hard at getting all of our past payments posted correctly on the site. So that when they tell us how many potential owners are out of compliance, and there's a lot. There's a lot that are registered and documented as registered, but we've not had a good system of tracking how much they pay. So, and then we've also been doing lots of reviews and deep dives into what other cities are doing in relation to short-term rentals. So we're, we're watching the legal field because there are several cities that are putting moratoriums on their short-term rentals. Right now, I don't feel the city has the resources to absorb a lawsuit against that at the moment, but we're, we're keeping very close eye legislatively on what's happening with other cities. But one thing we have discovered is that most cities that we've looked at have occupancy limits established. So as we look at modifying our short-term rental agreement to match other cities and what other cities are doing, what we'd like to discuss is, is kind of a four-prong approach. Number one is put an occupancy limit. Now, I'm sure Garve would tell us that it's not really enforceable. He can't go knock on a door and say, I'm going to count how many heads you have in beds here. That's not allowed. But we can confirm that they're not advertising more occupancy than our guidelines allow. Looking at other cities, most cities have a one, either a one or two-prong approach. The one-prong approach is most cities, it's two plus two. So you get two people per bedroom plus two. So a two-bedroom house would have an occupancy of six. You know, you can do the math, three bedroom is eight, four bedroom is ten. Some cities have two plus four, so you get two per bedroom plus four more. Majority though are two plus two. And then the other thing some cities do is they either give a special consideration where the city administrator has the right to grant to an exception on a higher occupancy. Or some of them have occupancies based on square footage. So whichever equation gives you the highest occupancy, be it bedrooms or square footage, that's what you apply. And so one of the things that's the, is, is we've been looking at how to improve the, well, basically put some limitations on short-term rentals. So that they truly are, the majority of our short-term rentals, they bring value to the neighborhood. We enjoy the tax revenue. But we know we've seen an uptick in the number of houses that are really driving high, high occupancy. So that's something we'd like to propose. We'd like to propose a higher annual registration fee. Galveston charges two fifty. Taz looked up some numbers, I think Austin is a three hundred and fifty dollar application fee.
A seven hundred and thirty dollar application fee.
And, and an annual renewal of.
Like three hundred dollars.
Yeah. So like to consider, it does take a tremendous amount of staff effort to oversee the STRs and making sure they're paying the taxes and doing what needs to be done.
And can I add?
Oh, yeah, this is discussion.
Austin has a fifteen-page application, that fifteen pages, and where you have to initial that you understand the trash ordinance. And, I mean, it, it addresses, it's beautiful, I think, and anyone can look at it. Kima has a ten-page application. Now, these are non-refundable, and so if you're not approved, you don't get your money back. So, and then there's the annual fee besides. And also, they have, and, and our city has an ordinance that short-term rentals can be audited. Yeah, so if you're not, not, so you have a fifteen-day notice and you, you can need to show up with your, with your records. So I think if we could, you know, look, look at all of, some of the things that other cities are doing and what we, and enforce ordinances that we already have, yeah.
But we are looking, probably the biggest thing is occupancy. That you can't advertise for more than the permitted bedrooms you have and more than the square footage that G-CAD has you listed for. And we, we can oversee that and make sure that they're not advertising for more occupancy. The other issue is parking. We all know that these high occupancy houses crowd our streets. And we've kind of struggled with the parking ordinance because we can't put in a parking ordinance that applies just to STRs. It has to apply to, the, the parking ordinance has to be for everyone. Just like our trash ordinance. You know, I can't put any kind of a trash ordinance in that just applies to STRs. It has to apply to everybody in the neighborhood. So parking is problematic. I know we, we talked some about parking as it pertains to STRs. We'll probably visit that again in the future. My thought, and I'd love to hear other people's opinion, is if we kind of get a handle on, on reducing the occupancy, the parking might fix itself. And we might not have an issue that we need to try to find a way to address with the citywide ordinance. So anyway, that's, that's kind of my comments on where we'd like to propose going with the STRs. We are in the process of trying to update the site with Granicus, trying to get the system up and working. And unfortunately, we found that in the prior implementation, it was missed by both our staff and by Granicus. They, they never paid their fifty dollar registration. So that, that money's gone under the table, we can't, to, to try to go back and get it at this point. But before we make a push for people to go out and register and get their STR numbers and start tracking, we, we'd like to have a new ordinance in place that we're communicating at the same time. Along with the requirements for what they have to post and what they have to agree to. So here's the ordinances that everybody needs to know, and here's the requirement to posting them. And we can audit periodically to make sure that those are. And I'm sure a lot of those people would love to, I mean, one thing we get all the time is people dropping off cars down three double oh five because they didn't know any different. And, you know, how to post that. So first of all, any comments from council on STRs and, and, you know, move forward with, with, with occupancy, higher fees?
Higher fees for sure. Occupancy, I, I don't know, that's, that's tough. Because the argument you'll get when you try to enforce is, well, we're just here at the party and we're going to leave at whenever, and that might. And that might, we don't know what that's gonna be. It's like my friends, it's gonna be three AM and I'm- But, um, it's just something to think about. I, I'm in, in general, in favor of higher registration fees and, and more, more enforcement of, of, uh, existing ordinances.
Yeah, I, it's all proactive. And we haven't been proactive. So I'm in favor of revisiting the STR ordinance, tightening it up a little bit. As far as occupancy, it's one of the things I was so disappointed that it didn't get done the first time around. I'd like to see it happen this time. Um, this, this goes, this goes to test of reason. It's a law term. It's very important. So I think if what we do meets the test of reason, we should be able to do these things. Other cities are doing, have done them, as, as the mayor committed out. And that's why they could do them. Because what they did met the test of reason. We follow when that type of, that type of precedent's been set. And we do things that are proactive through, I'm, I'm for both, both for the fees and both for doing something about occupancy. It's the first step, it's a good step. Thank you.
Russell Woody, any comments? Thoughts? No?
I'd like for somebody to look into enforcing the occupancy limits. From what I recall, investigating in this before, it's a slippery slope.
I always thought ahead to with some amount of bathrooms you had. You can't have fifteen people in one bathroom, no matter how many beds you have.
For your mission. Test of reason.
Uh, because they'll be pouring everywhere besides in the bathroom.
Okay.
Thank you, Woody.
All right, Jerry?
Jerry Jackson. Uh, if you base it on square footage, uh, it should be the square footage that's on CAD.
That's right.
Uh, and if it says three bedrooms, it does not include the four bedrooms they just built downstairs.
It's, it's what's permitted, uh, I think, I think the language that, um-
Whatever the language is, but so many-
Freeport is using language that says you can have two plus two, which is two people per bedroom, plus two for permitted bedrooms. Uh, so-
Well, FEMA doesn't allow anything downstairs if you, if you were, if it's not a grandfather structure.
Yeah.
And there's people putting brand-new houses with the downstairs. That's gonna, it's gonna come back and get us like it did in Tiki. They're gonna come in and up our insurance rates-
Absolutely.
Until we get all of them out of here.
And there, I mean, there's a house being built, I think it may be finished now. It had six bedrooms, it's only two stories, a lot of bedrooms downstairs. They've built that one.
I mean, that's against the-
And seven bed bathrooms.
FEMA.
Yeah, so, uh, anyway, the language-
Six bedrooms and seven bathrooms.
The language Freeport is doing is permitted bedrooms. So when we do the application, an STR person will, you know, they'll have to show us that these bedrooms are permitted to allow us to advertise that space. Uh, yes, Lisa?
Um, Lisa Yanishe, forty-two ten Quanqua. Um, on the parking, I thought I remembered a couple of years ago in the meeting, we were talking about short-term rentals. They had, um, personnel from Sandin C that oversaw their rentals. And I thought she said you could have one car per bedroom.
That's what Sandin C requires as part of their contracts. So a lot of the agencies do have requirements like that. But, uh, as a city-
Right, okay.
I, I can't, Sandin C has a very strict contract that their people have to follow.
Madam Mayor, uh, Dale Hubert, sixteen seven twenty, Sam Piper. Um, I'd like to revisit the volunteerism a little bit more because we have a volunteer police department. We have a volunteer fire department. All those people are citizens. If you vote no, then I would suspect that we have no volunteer police and no volunteer fire. That's just my opinion. Okay? Because those people are volunteers, they're not paid. Unlike, you know, some of our previous administrations and councilmen who have been paid.
Thank you.
Just thought I'd point that out.
Definitely. Yes, Mr. Ayers?
Uh, Al Ayers, forty-eight twenty-one, Jolly Roger. Uh, we're talking about registration of the STRs and bedrooms and bathrooms and what have you. When they fill out their application or when they register, do we have someone to go out and verify?
We certainly could.
That's, I mean, we got, they're saying, "Well, we have four bedrooms." And, uh, we don't know whether there are four bedrooms on the second floor or three and one underneath. You know, without, unless somebody, unless we go out and verify where those bedrooms are.
Um, I know when the committee, when the short-term rental committee visited that a while back with, with the first one. Um, it was just, at, at the time, the amount of finishing out lower rooms and renting non-permitted space was not as prevalent as it is today. And the decision was made that the amount of staff it would take to go verify that and, and do those inspections wouldn't add enough value. Uh, but that is something we could surely revisit. Uh, the other ordinances we've been looking at lately, most places require some sort of safety inspection, some sort of compliance inspection prior to the registration being given. So it's definitely something we can visit. Uh, hang on a second, uh, his, sir.
Chris Warren, one six seven one one, Flamingo Way. I want to second something else I just put out there, and I do this in general in everything, and I said it here two years ago, is, yes, enforce the laws you have before you pound new ones. You're making more money off of everybody already with these. You've got more staff. You're, where's the money going? I mean, come on. Be leaders, lead. Enforce things you already have. You're talking about new houses, building stuff, we, we all know this gets permits.
Could you repeat her name and address once again?
Chris Warren, one six seven one one, Flamingo Way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kelly, behind you. Uh, Kelly, behind you, back off.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I was gonna, I was gonna just say also, Mayor, like you were saying about security. We had two house fires this past year. For, I would wanna go check these houses because we've even had issues with people renting next to us. They wanna make sure our bedroom is a bedroom. And has safety and has egress out because, you know, God forbid something happened. But there is a lot of safety and security in making sure that when people come and stay here, that the parking has what is listed on the ad. And the number of bedrooms are actual bedrooms, not closets. I mean, that's my two cents on it.
Yeah, yeah. Jerry, just a second. Uh, Kelly?
That was just, uh, Kelly Billy out on Jolly Roger. Um, I was just wondering if you guys, when you do revisit this ordinance, if you can maybe add in as you're looking at, uh, the, the STRs that are not permitted yet and those that are, is, is there anything we can do from an ordinance standpoint that would label them? Like, can we make them put a sign up that says, "This is a rental?" And an occupancy number, maybe even? And like the one that's on, uh, what's the name of the, the Live in the Dream? They have on their sign, it's got the owner's phone number, the manager's phone number, all of those things. And it says clearly on their out, right outside of their house, "If there are any issues with the renters or anything else, please call us." Can we not just put it back on the owner and have them set it up in front that says, "This is a rental"?
That's a good act, Kelly. Thank you. Um, okay, Jerry, last comment, then we're gonna-
Okay, my last comment is with him. Okay, with the volunteers, okay? For inspecting these, uh, applications, a volunteer can assist. We swear in, the volunteer policeman, we can swear in a volunteer inspector to go out and see how safe it is, if they have a fire extinguisher, and whatever you want to do. But you can, you know, swerve them in. You know, even if you have a volunteer in here, you know, there's only gonna be a few people. Like, like Ginger's been volunteering, okay? She came in volunteering. She- Swerve them in.
Yeah.
That's, make you happy, I guess. Well, I mean-
Thank you.
They're not gonna be looking into secret. I-
Okay, I appreciate the great input. Um, as usual, some great ideas and some great takeaways. Um, and so that, that concludes our new business, um, onto Mayor's report. I would like to thank Ms. Ginger Jones. Uh, our, our court clerk has been very overwhelmed, uh, getting systems up and backlog of paperwork done. And she had a, she had a stack of boxes. And, you know, I went in and asked her, I said, "Hey, how you doing?" And she said, "Well, good, but, but I gotta find time to file all this stuff." And I knew that Ms. Jones had come up to me and said, "Sharon, anything I can do to help, you just let me know." So our court clerk contacted Ginger and she came and spent several hours up here this past week. And she is the record queen of filing. And, and Jennifer can walk around her desk now and not have to, to maneuver around stacks of boxes that needed to be filed. So thank you very much, Ginger.
You're welcome. Not a problem.
Also, I, uh, I'm gonna make apologies again. Uh, Esther and I, we're gonna work Friday and Saturday and we are gonna get check registers posted. And she's been making great progress on getting all our backlog done, uh, getting our coding a little cleaner and more consistent so that we're gonna be ready to, to put, uh, put financials out there next week. So, uh, we are gonna buckle down and, and crank it out. We're, we're at that point where we're, uh, we're, we're finally over that hurdle where we can put numbers out that we feel confident in. Um, and that's basically what I have from a mayor's report perspective. And, uh, and, and council, we are gonna, um, convene an executive session for a short meeting. So, huh?
Can we do that?
When I've checked on it-
I'm asking because every, every action we take, gotta, gotta be on this freaking agenda.
When, yeah, and I did, I, I did, it, uh, we can convene-
We convene into executive session to discuss any items on the agenda, but we cannot convene into an executive session to discuss items that are not on the agenda. I mean, that, that's-
Well, after the, after the adjournments, there's always been this, um, right here that talks about into closed session. So, and it's about, there are four different things, five different things that the council can discuss in, in executive session that are listed here.
So, let's not let this one-
Anyway, if we're not comfortable, I'll, I'll, I'll put it, I'll put it on the agenda officially for next time.
Being that idea.
But I, no, no, when I-
Don't be that guy anymore.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We're tired of it.
We-
So you changed the verbiage?
We felt, no, that's the same verbiage it's always been.
Yeah, you had to specifically say.
Okay, well, we'll hold off then.
That's, that's some of the language we shouldn't do in a task. Definitely should specifically.
Okay, we, we will. It's, when you read the laws, it's, it is very gray around that, that area. But, uh, and after open meetings training, it, you know, it, it indicated. But we'll, I'll put it on the agenda this time.
I see it now, but it's, it's different than what it was before.
It's, it's the same language it's been. Anyway, okay, then, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? All right.